Not all is cracked up to be mock.[6.12][6.12](laughter)
Actually, I have no idea.[8.86][8.86](laughter)
Brian, you're all set?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for April 11th, 2016. As senior member of the Board of Selectmen, I will be opening this meeting. Before I turn it over to the Town Administrator for nominations for Chair, I would like to thank all of the voters of Milford who supported me in this reelection campaign. And I'm pleased to be able to return and continue my work on behalf of the Town of Milford. Thank you to everyone. So with that, I would turn it over to the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Brian. At this time, I would be seeking nominations for the Chairman for the Board of Selectmen.
I move to nominate William Buckley as Chair.
Seconded.
All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'd like to open up first by congratulating Brian on his reelection outstanding job. And I know we have the ability to move forward with confidence from the voters and support from our community. I look forward to it. I appreciate the confidence that my colleagues give me. And I just want to say thank you. You know, before we get to the scheduled appointments, I did want to just outline a little bit of a goal and start off this meeting looking forward to the next year. And I have some notes that I want to review. You know, in 2015, the Governor Baker's administration first put forward the idea of community compacts. The community compacts are ways in which communities can leverage best practices, learn from other communities, and also gain benefit through the various grants that are available by getting extra points for being part of this process. I think there's a couple of things that are worth mentioning. First of all, I think Milford has a great deal of best practices we can share with other communities. I also believe that there are opportunities where we can get the benefit of other communities' best practices. Sometimes we tend to look inward. I think there are opportunities to look outward, and I think the community compacts to the Baker and Polito administration are a way to do that. What I'm going to recommend and allow Board members to review and consider that for the next meeting is I'm going to recommend that we begin a community IT compact. Basically, what it's intended to do is review cybersecurity, personal information protection. People, I think, would be amazed at the amount of personal information that a community gathers and a municipal government gathers. We have over 600 employees, much more than that in W-2s when we talk about seasonal employees. We have their transaction routing numbers. We have a great deal of information. We have employee personal information as it relates to health care and health issues. We want to protect that, obviously, and one of the ways to do that is look through the compact, which has been working on some of these issues. There's business continuity, disaster recovery, and backup considerations for IT. We want to make sure we're looking at those best practices. And there's also data standards and interoperability with software that I think can be considered as we work with the state. So I think there's great opportunity in a community compact as it relates to IT. The other one that I know that in looking at what the state has been doing, and I think it's appropriate for what we're doing and where we are now, is to look at public transportation compact. They're signing public transportation compacts with other communities. I think there's a great deal of opportunity in that as we partner and look for best practice. And I think it's an opportunity in two areas. Not only do we look for best practice, but there's an area of our funding that we need to look into and we need to work with the state on. We want to utilize this compact to see as a secondary way to influence the decisions that are made at the state level. Folks may not be aware of the unique situation Milford is in, not being in the state catchment area. We've talked about it. The Board members are very clear. Harold's very clear, and other members are clear. But in a way, we're penalized with 100% local contribution, local aid contribution. We want to see if we can seek equitable solutions and work with those because every other community in the state is subsidized through the state. So we've got to work with somebody, and I think the Baker administration, Polito administration is certainly a good way to start, and I think it's a way to establish that rapport and look at best practices. Aside from community compacts, I think the direction that the community is going, I'd like to be, you know, positive thinking in our approach to community public transportation. I'd like the Board to consider a Public Transportation Advisory Planning Commission. And that commission can help us with short and long-term planning. I think it can help us to develop local, short-term performance measures, levels of service scorecard, those types of things, to get the feedback from our community. I think that there's also a great deal of opportunity to create awareness in the direction that I hope Milford is going. And if they're not going there now in this town meeting, I still think that this Advisory Planning Commission would be helpful, whether it's the type of routes and pickup times, locations, promoting and managing use, outreach, and manage of feedback. If there's constructive criticism that we're to get, that commission could be aggregate for that process. And I also think that there's certainly something we need to look at as it relates to recommendations for park-and-ride lots in the downtown area. It's a way to help spur economic development near businesses. And I think that if we get a look at our inventory of town-owned land, get recommendations for park-and-ride, then I think that's a great opportunity for this community. And I think the Board can play a strong role in its leadership. That would also mean that as members of the MWR, the RTA, the Regional Transport Administration, that as we bring feedback to this Board on a monthly basis, it's a way to bring that feedback through that administration and through that commission to that Board. You know, because you can have one member as a representative member. That doesn't mean they're going to have a great grasp on the total system. So I think getting feedback through that commission is helpful, and I expect that should work out well for those that represent this community. The last thing I'd like to do is, number four, I'd like to make sure we provide the IDC with assistance. It's a community group, IDC being the Industrial Development Commission, whose goals are to assist Milford businesses, existing businesses, and attract new businesses and industries in town. I think there's great opportunity to work with that Board to kind of energize it again and look for more proactive, and maybe there's an opportunity for initiative-based funding for benchmarking if we need. But we need to see how we can help them. I think it's up to this Board to make sure that the membership has an opportunity to report out and that they come here. So I'm going to recommend that we schedule an upcoming meeting with the IDC, probably two meetings out. Give them time. But what I want to do is just have them report out and document their successes, challenges, and lessons, and how they might better get coaching and guidance and leadership from this Board of Selectmen, how to incentivize downtown development, and look for the opportunity for initiative-based funding, whether it be for solutions, parking or otherwise is an example, and benchmarking of other communities. Maybe there's the help that we can provide. We want to make sure we incorporate the IDC influence into Milford's long-range planning for downtown as well. And downtown is just a piece of the industrial development and commercial development that we're looking at and talking about. So those are the four things that I hope to get support through this Board, that we'll do those things in the coming year. I know it's aggressive, and, you know, I think each of us brings our own skill and our own mindset to these things, and appreciate hearing from the other members as we move forward. Okay. With that said, welcome, as Brian said, to the April 11th, 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll take a motion for the signing of the warrant.
I'll move. Seconded.
That's unanimous. Looking for approval of the March 21st meeting minutes?
Still moved. Seconded.
And that's unanimous. Right now, next on the agenda is invitation to speak. Is there anybody who would like to approach the Board who's not otherwise on the agenda? Mr. Visconti?
Brian, he's here. He'll come up.
Maybe we can give you a microphone in the end chair. Maybe we can just move that.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Mike Visconti. I live at 7 Muriel Lane in Milford. I came here tonight as my understanding that there either is now or soon will be a vacant seat on the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular member. I came here tonight to promote myself as the most qualified person to fill that vacant seat as a regular member. I have spent 20 years in the past on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I feel that I am the most qualified person to sit as a regular member on that Board now. I would like to clarify one report in the media this morning. It was reported that in the 20 years that I spent on the Zoning Board, I missed only one meeting. I believe that report gave me a little more credit than I deserve. Actually, in the interest of honesty and clarity, in the 20 years on the Zoning Board, I actually missed three meetings. So I believe we need to be accurate when we report these things. In any case, I am a dedicated servant of the town, and I believe I will do a good job. I am well-versed in our zoning bylaws, probably as much or more as any citizen in this town. I have 45 years' experience in planning, design, engineering, and construction, and I believe those qualities, along with my honesty and integrity, will bring added value to that Board. There are a couple of other pluses that will be had if I am appointed to that Board. Number one, your Board will be appointing the most qualified person to sit on that Board, even though while that person is acquainted with the Board members, he is not a friend of any of the Board members. And I believe this will do two things. Appointing me to that Board will do two things. It will increase the credibility of that Board and will also help to restore your Board's return to grace with the taxpayers by showing them that you are able to appoint the most qualified person who is not a friend or relative of any of the Board members. So I would respectfully request that, when the time comes, you please appoint me to fill that position as a regular member on the Zoning Board. Thank you.
All right, Mike. Let me respond at least. I know, first of all, thank you for your comments, and I just want to say that I appreciate your services to the community, and I do think you approached it with honesty and integrity. So that's not in question in my mind, but I appreciate it, and thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Personnel Board Classification Study. I'll let the members introduce themselves and introduce everybody here and talk about the -- I know you have a PowerPoint that you want to go through.
Probably before I get into the presentation, maybe the other Board members -- by the way, I'm Charlie Abrahamsen, Chairman. And I'll repeat that when I get into my -- but if the other Board members want to introduce themselves.
Dennis Carroll.
Warren Haller.
Jim LaBora, but I am actually no longer on the Board, but I'm here for citizen support.
A new member of the Milford School Committee. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Laura?
I'm Laura Christopher Lee.
All right.
Okay.
Let's take it away, Chairman.
All right. Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Charlie Abrahamsen, and I'm Chairman of the Personnel Board. And I'm here to speak to you about the proposed classification and compensation plan, which consists of about 25 salaried and 36 hourly positions. If we add the other classified positions, such as lifeguards and other things like that, that are under Article II, the total is about 126 positions, some of which involve multiple employees. Our Board and the town meeting are the only representation that these people have. We delayed presenting this proposal at the previous annual town meeting last year at the request of your Board and the Finance Committee in order to obtain additional information. We have benefited from this information, and also we appreciated the input from the liaison from your Board, Mr. Kinkade, and from the liaison from the Finance Committee, Mr. Miklosovich. We ask that you please hold your questions and comments until at the end of our entire presentation. I began my professional career as a Milford first-town planner back in the 1970s. I quickly learned that that position entailed a lot of night meetings. That experience prepared me for my role on the Personnel Board because in the past 15 months, we have held over 35 meetings, both in the evenings and on Saturdays. I wasn't prepared for that. But Warren, you lied to me.[952.63][952.63](laughter) The Classification and Compensation Plan addresses almost 16 years of changes in positions, changes in duties and responsibilities, and organizational changes within the town. Traditionally, our Board has only recommended annual cost-of-living increases. This plan responds to those years of changes, plus equity issues, addresses equity issues within the town, and adjusts pay rates to the current market conditions. This is not an economic study. It is a market equity study. During this process, we have been shooting at a moving target. A number of elected positions have become appointed positions. A new department, the Finance Department, was created. Positions previously reporting to your Board of Selectmen now report either to the Town Administrator or the Finance Director. New positions such as Benefits Coordinator, Highway Supervisor, and IT Manager have been added. As you will see in the following presentation, the new plan adapts easily to these changes in a fair, equitable, and consistent manner. It compensates employees based upon the current market conditions while keeping the town competitive and attracting new positions and retaining those already within the town. We are also scheduled to present this Classification and Compensation Study to the Finance Board on April 27th, and we also plan on meeting with department heads and employees prior to the annual town meeting. I would now like to turn our presentation over to our consultant, Donald Jacobs of DI Jacobs Consulting Company, to further explain our compensation plan and classification plan. Mr. Jacobs has been working with us since the start of the study two years ago, and he'll explain for years prior to that. Again, we ask you to hold questions and concerns until the end of Don's presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Don?
Yeah. Thank you, Charlie. Again, my name is Don Jacobs. For the record, I'm the Principal of DI Jacobs Consulting Company. And before I get into the actual presentation, let me just take a couple of minutes just to tell you a little bit more about who I am. I believe I've had, on a couple of other occasions, an opportunity to meet with the Board. But basically, I've been functioning as a municipal management consultant for the last 16 years with my own company. And I always like to describe myself in terms of the work that I do is primarily with cities and towns all over, not only in New England, but frankly, in lots of other places around the United States, on the issue of how to manage compensation. And to date, I've probably done, believe it or not, almost, to round it off in whole numbers, about 100 classification-compensation studies with municipalities of all different sizes. And as Charlie indicated, I've been working with the Town of Milford for several years now. And I think during that time, I'd be remiss if I didn't begin by, first of all, sharing with you what an incredibly dedicated group of individuals you have serving on the Personnel Board. I've worked with a lot of Boards, and believe me when I tell you, I've yet to work with a group of individuals that not only support one another, but really have the best interests of the Town of Milford and specifically the employees in mind. And they work extremely hard, as Charlie mentioned, whether it's the number of meetings, the amount of time it takes. But I guess to sum it all up in a nutshell, this really is about how to manage compensation. And frankly, what we're sharing with you tonight is a process. We're not asking for any votes from the Board this evening. I would encourage you to listen as we take you through the process and obviously ask questions regarding how the process has been established and ultimately now been approved by the Personnel Board. So let me begin, as I always typically try to do, with stating what I think the purpose of the study really is. Why do you have a classification-compensation plan? And I think the easiest way to say that is to state, as it indicates on the screen here, the purpose of the study was, again, as Charlie mentioned, to conduct a market equity study. Right up front, I think it's important to understand, this is not a cost-of-living study. The purpose of this study was really to establish a process whereby the Town of Milford would be able to pay employees and positions in a fair manner, and what I mean by the word "fair," I really mean consistent, and at the same time equitable or competitive manner, both internally within the Town of Milford as well as externally in terms of how the Town of Milford compares to the marketplace. And I think a characteristic of a goal or purpose statement is that that's ongoing. So really, what I'm suggesting is that establishing a process to pay positions and employees, it's an ongoing process. And I think that as you work on this process, you'll only continue to do it in a more effective way. So in order to accomplish the goal to pay positions and employees in a consistent and equitable manner, there were three specific objectives, all of which now have been completed, that made up the study. And therefore, as I indicate, what we've accomplished is that we've now written job descriptions, again, in a consistent manner and also accurate manner, to describe both what employees are required to do and, as it indicates on the screen, what the town establishes as the minimum qualifications. Or another way to describe minimum qualifications are the knowledge, ability, and skill that are required by the town of an employee in order to carry out the job duties. All of that information now is written, is contained in a job description, and the job descriptions have been written in a consistent manner, no matter whether we're talking about salaried positions, hourly positions, stipend or otherwise. The point being that going forward, there is one standard format now that the Town of Milford will write job descriptions. And based on how those job descriptions are written, the second objective was to compare those positions to one another, and in doing so, develop a classification plan. The classification process, comparing positions to one another, has been aided by a system that is referred to as a position-rating system, which is really basically a management tool consisting of a set of universal rating criteria, like education, experience, supervision required, supervisory responsibility, and so forth. The point being that the rating criteria, the evaluation criteria, enable you to compare positions to one another, once again, in a consistent way, and we've done that. Based on how the positions were compared and classification plans for both salaried and hourly positions have been developed, we then have developed a compensation plan, again, for both salaried and hourly positions, that is competitive with the marketplace on a position-by-position basis, that is really enabling the town to be able to recruit and retain a quality workforce. And so what I'm going to walk you through now are a series of slides that really basically break down into two components, the classification plan and then the compensation plan. So from a classification standpoint, and then again, the word "classification" means how we've compared positions to one another, not just based on dollars and cents, but as the previous slide indicated, based on what you require an employee to do and what you now established as the minimum qualifications to carry out those job duties. So based on applying a position-rating system, what is being recommended to you this evening for salaried positions is a classification plan consisting of five grade levels and an hourly position-classification plan consisting of three grade levels. The next chart, or I should say, what's in your packet, so as we go through these slides, you also have a series of support documents or information that really give you a little bit more information about, in this case, how we've developed the classification plan. So the first attachment or support document that I would draw your attention to is what is entitled "A Proposed Classification Plan or Characteristic Chart for Salaried Positions." And I believe you have that chart in front of you, or it should be in your handouts. So what you see now on the screen are what I refer to as characteristics that describe each of the five grade levels that make up the recommended classification plan for salaried positions. Without getting into a lot of detail, I'm happy to come back and maybe walk you through it or answer specific questions. But suffice it to say that when you look at the characteristics, as you see for each of the five grade levels, they're basically showing you what are the minimum qualifications that now characterize each grade level. And once the Personnel Board had approved those five grade levels, then, as the second handout in your packet indicates, we then recommended positions to be assigned to those five grade levels. So as you see here now, the positions are being recommended to be assigned to each of the five grade levels, consistent with the characteristics that define each of the five levels. The next handout in your packet pertains to the hourly positions. And again, the process that we've used to compare hourly positions to one another is exactly the same as we've used to compare salaried positions. The only difference being now that with the hourly positions, we're recommending that there be three grade levels established, not five, for the salaried positions. And once again, you have a handout in your packet that's entitled "Proposed Classification Plan Grade Level Characteristic Chart for Specifically the Three Grade Levels That Hourly Positions Are Being Recommended to Be Classified in." So from a process standpoint, the first objective really was to develop the characteristics that would define -- when I say five grade levels or three grade levels, another way to look at that or to understand what we mean by the term "grade levels," the grade levels are meant to reflect different levels of responsibility. And the hierarchy of grade levels, whether it be the five levels in the salaried group or the three grade levels with the hourly group, are designed to be consistent with your organizational structure of the town. So if you were to put an org chart of the Town of Milford up on a board, whether it be within one department or horizontally across departments, the number of grade levels that you see listed there, the five grade levels for salaried or the three grade levels for hourly, are really saying to you that we feel that there are five levels of responsibility or independence for positions in the salaried group, just as we're saying that there are three levels of responsibility for positions in the hourly group. And if you want to know what we mean by the levels of responsibility, all you really have to do is look at the characteristic chart. And the characteristic chart will explain those levels of responsibility or what I referred to earlier as minimum qualifications. So that's basically the classification plan. In order to develop the compensation plan, the first thing is, I know the Board is well aware, we had to survey the marketplace. And as a result of the meeting that the Personnel Board had with the Board of Selectmen, I believe it was last spring, I was directed by the Personnel Board to survey the marketplace and specifically the 13 communities you see listed here. And those communities were selected based on both operational criteria as well as demographic criteria. So what I'm sharing with you from a process standpoint, in comparing the Town of Milford to the marketplace, we're not just using per capita income or equalized valuation or other demographic criteria like population, but we're also using operational criteria on a position-by-position basis. So that when we go to compare the Town of Milford to other communities in the marketplace, and as I've already indicated, we do it on a position-by-position basis, we're able to use operational criteria so that we're able, as best we can, to determine what are comparable positions in the marketplace that reflect basically the same levels or comparable levels of responsibility. Specifically, we added, as the asterisks indicated, three communities to the group of communities that were surveyed from when we initially surveyed the marketplace two years ago. And those three additional communities were Auburn, Dartmouth, and Drakeatt. I would submit to you, again, from a process standpoint, what's very important to understand is not as much the data itself, and we'll get into specifically the data, but I think what's really most important is how you recommend to use the data. And we'll share that with you in the next couple of slides. So when we went to compare the communities, there's an attachment in your packet that's entitled "Fiscal 2016 Municipal Survey Profile." If you look at that chart that's in your packet, it'll show you the 13 communities, and it'll show you the demographic characteristics that describe each of the 13 communities and how those characteristics compare to the Town of Milford. And I guess to sum all that up from a demographic standpoint, really what we're trying to say is that as long as the communities that we're comparing ourselves to are comparable, not equal to, but comparable to the Town of Milford, then we're comfortable using that data as a guide to help us develop salary ranges for each of the grade levels, whether it be the hourly positions or the salaried positions. The next handout in your packet, which is, I believe, numbered number six, actually shows you the salary data we collected. And there are two charts in handout number six. There's the summary chart that you see, which shows you again all the There's the summary chart that you see, which shows you again all the positions, in this case, the salaried positions, that were surveyed, and how the salary data for each of those positions compares, compared to the salary ranges that currently exist in the current classification compensation plan for those positions. And what follows the summary chart is a detailed chart. So, if you want to know who responded and how they responded to each of the positions that were surveyed, you just have to look at the backup charts that are entitled "Fiscal 2016 Salary Survey for Salaried Positions." The next set of charts in your handout are the same summary and detailed charts for the hourly positions. So, unlike the salaried positions, we only surveyed, what I would describe to you as a benchmark grouping, a random selected number of part-time or hourly positions, and we compared them to the same 13 communities that we used for the salaried positions. So, again, this is currently, these two charts, the summary chart and the detailed chart, are simply showing you how, what the, how the town of Milford's salary ranges for each of the respective positions compares to the market data, again, for each position. If you look at the next chart, you can go to the next slide, Charlie. Slide number four. Just keep, keep going. Number four. Is that number four? That's number three. One more. There you go. For some reason, it didn't come up on the screen.
While he's doing that, you can walk us through your hard copy.
Yeah, let me walk you through it again. I know people at home, if they're not able to see the board. If you look at handout number 10 in your packet, what we're sharing with you here is the salary range structure development process that the personnel board has used, or has approved, excuse me, in order to develop salary ranges, whether they be salaried or hourly. And there are five steps that consist, that describe the process. And so, what, what this chart is showing you, or this handout is showing you, is how the personnel board has recommended salary data to be used in order to develop salary ranges for each of the grade levels in both salaried as well as the hourly plan. And in order to develop salary ranges that are competitive with the marketplace, and again, consistent with the classification plan, the process that we're following, and it was being recommended to be established, enables the town, going forward, to establish ranges in a consistent way. We'll get to the actual plan in a minute, and you'll see that the plan consists of eight steps compared to what is currently in place as five steps. The number of steps really isn't the important part of this as much as it is what the steps reflect and what, what they represent. But if you look at the salary range process again, this will simply tell you how the ranges have been developed, consistent with the classification plan. Now, the next handout, which is handout number 11, is the proposed salary range, the fiscal 2016 survey data for salaried positions, and then the next handout in your packet is for hourly. So, based on the process that you saw in handout number 10, the ranges have now been established based on using market data to really establish competitive salary ranges, meaning the minimum step and then the eighth step in each of the grade levels. Again, the salaried consists of five grade levels and the hourly, three grade levels. But again, the process is the same. So, what we're, what I'm sharing with you, what I'm saying, is that we've used market data to guide the personnel board to develop a competitive minimum and an eighth step, and then compare that data, which is what this handout number 11 shows you, to the market data to ensure that the ranges are in fact competitive with the market data that we've looked at in this current fiscal year. So that going forward, from a process standpoint, in order to maintain the salary ranges, you would collect additional salary data periodically, and all that data will do is adjust the ranges by the market data. In the past, what has happened is that you've typically adjusted ranges by what you might have referred to as a cost of living or an across-the-board salary adjustment. That is not part of the process anymore. So, if ranges are going to be adjusted, they'll be adjusted by the town in order to stay competitive with the market data. So, really what we're saying is that we let the market data tell you how to adjust the range or how much to adjust ranges. And again, there's a, there's a similar handout for hourly positions as there is for salaried. Handout number 12 and number 11 are for the salaried and the hourly positions. And it shows you on these charts, these handouts, once again, how the market data is being used in order to develop the ranges. Now, one thing I didn't mention to you is that in developing the ranges, and if you look at the market data in these charts, really what we've done is we've ruled out the highs and the lows of the market data. We've grouped the data by survey average minimum, midpoint, and maximum. We've eliminated the minimum and the maximum data and focused on the midpoint of the market data that we've collected. It's what I referred to earlier relative to how we've recommended using the market data more so than what the actual numbers are. So, from a process standpoint, we're focusing on midpoint of market data in order to develop a competitive salary range for each of the, each of the respective grade levels. The last slide that we want to share with you really kind of summarizes or encapsulates, capsulizes all the effect of developing the classification and compensation plan and the method that, that I've outlined. And what this slide is showing you is that, is comparing the proposed classification compensation plan to what had previously been an across-the-board salary adjustment process. And in fact, in fiscal 17, what we've used for comparison purposes would be if the town were to adjust the current plan by 2% and compare the cost of doing that to the cost of implementing the proposed classification compensation plan. You can see what the cost variances are, both in dollars and cents as well as percentage terms. And again, just so that you're clear and understand what we're comparing, if you were to take the current plan and adjust the whole plan by 2%, and all the salaries would go up by 2%, compare to the proposed classification compensation plan consisting of the different grade level range structures, the cost comparison is relatively small. And I think that's probably best reflected when you compare the cost of the proposed plan to the cost of just simply adjusting your current plan by 2%. You're looking at a percentage difference of well under 3%. And that's looking out over the next three fiscal years. And obviously, as we indicate, everything on this slide is based on current employee salaries. So, when you estimate cost for fiscal '18, fiscal '19, we're using current salaries as a basis to determine that cost for the, for the following fiscal years. So, it's a little bit misleading in the sense that obviously salaries are going to change, employees are going to change, but based on what exists today, we're able to compare what the cost is for fiscal '17 and what that cost would be over the following two fiscal years as well. So, that, Mr. Chairman, you know, is a fairly rushed or brief outline of the process that was followed.
Nice job, Doc.
I guess I want to conclude by also indicating to the board that the personnel board intends to meet with your employees, department heads and employees that are covered by the study. And I think based on the feedback that the board will get, both from the finance committee, yourselves, as well as the employees, then I think the personnel board will be in a, in a good position to come to your town meeting with a proposed plan that everyone understands. And so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to stop and open it up to any questions you might have.
And before I go to the board, I just want to reflect on something you had said and talked about, the dedication and hard work of the members of the personnel board. I also want to give that sentiment as well. I know that this took an awful lot of meetings and a lot of late-night meetings, a lot of time away from family and friends and other things that you might have otherwise wanted to do. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate your chairmanship. And I just, I look forward to hearing what not only other members of the Board of Selectmen think about what, what we've heard tonight, because there's an awful lot of information to absorb here.
Right.
And frankly, I don't know that I'm capable of absorbing all of the information, but I do have a couple of questions. I also think there's an opportunity, as you go forward with the FinCom and the finance director, to get them that information so that they can analyze it themselves and take independent review of it and provide feedback to you. Those are two groups. I know you plan to meet with the FinCom, but I'd like to see a packet to also go to the finance director.
Mr. Chairman, Zach has already been part of our discussions for a number of weeks, months.
All right. I don't know if he's up to speed on the output of this. Okay, good. All right. I'll open it up to, to my colleagues. Brian, any thoughts, comments?
Thank you, and thanks to all of you. Obviously, there has been a lot of work put into this study. Just looking at it quickly, and I'll run through it, but please don't lose that because I want to run through that explanation again. I don't really understand going forward. On your grade levels, okay, your grade levels, one, two, three, four, five, how does that work? We've got the minimum years prior work experience, three to five, five to seven. What if we hire a kid right out of college?
Yeah, that's a good question. These are minimum for the position, not for who you might decide you want to hire, let's say, as the most qualified applicant. In fact, when you look at the job descriptions, for example, they're all written and they include a standard sentence that says, or equivalent combination of years of experience and/or education in terms of determining who's most qualified to be hired. These standards pertain specifically to the position, not the employee, okay? So, it's a way for us to use, you know, as I mentioned earlier, a set of universal rating criteria, one of which is years of experience, another one is education, as minimum requirements, the key word being "minimum", not necessarily what an applicant might have or an employee might have in the way of his or her own qualifications.
So, if that college kid were to come in with zero years' work experience, is that going to preclude him or her from plugging into one of the five levels?
No, not at all.
Okay.
In terms of being qualified for a position, in fact, you, that's a good example to use. You could use years of services and experience. Let's say I apply for a position, and that college applicant that you mentioned has one or two years of work experience, but has a bachelor's degree in whatever field it is you want. You could use an educational degree as a substitute for years of experience or vice versa.
Okay.
I don't have the degree, but I have years of experience. When you combine the two, really what we're talking about is not the degree and not necessarily the years of experience, but the level of knowledge that you need to have in order to carry out the job duties. And those are only two of the, what are ultimately 13 rating criteria.
Okay, but I mean, as I look at these grade levels, I see those two as the top bullet items, not indicating that's an either-or.
Yeah, and as I indicated-
On all five levels.
That's right, and it varies depending upon what level. I've highlighted, I've underlined for you what I think of the key characteristics that really define one grade level from another. And you notice what I haven't underlined is education or experience. So, for example, when you look at the salaried positions, and specifically grade level one, you notice what I've underlined is the phrase "general supervision"
Right.
and "no regular supervisory responsibility." Those are the two basic, primary characteristics that define any position that's going to be assigned to grade level one, not the employee.
Okay.
Grade level two, on the other hand, you notice, you see the phrase "general direction," not "general supervision."
Yeah, I understand, you know, the work description. I just have a little problem, I guess, understanding how those top two bullet items are requirements, but I guess you're saying that they're not, they're-
They're not specific requirements
All right.
in terms of who to hire. They're minimum qualifications relative to defining the, ultimately, what is really the level of responsibility for positions in each of the grade levels. And again, we're talking about positions, not employees.
Okay, all right. But position, but, but employees plug into the positions.
Right, which is why you can have an equivalent combination of education and/or experience. You still have the flexibility, as the hiring authority, to determine who you want to hire. It's the position that's being classified.
Right, right. No, I understand that, but I don't know that the system would preclude a particular employee from being in one of the grade levels
Not at all.
if he or she did not have, you know, the prior work experience.
That's right. It would not preclude him at all.
Okay.
At all.
All right. I see the towns, and you've added some other towns, which is, which is fine. I mean, I think Milford's still a little bit on the low end as I look at, you know, the ones I looked at was per capita income. What is the equalized value per capita? We're also on the higher end of the state aid. But at least that, you know, there are other communities here to cross-reference. And then I see the ranges that you have as they match up with the various towns.
And if I could just interject-
Focusing just on the salary positions. Let me just ask you a question. On number 11
Yep.
is, are these, are these misprints on Town Accountant, Town Treasurer, and Facilities Director?
Misprints in what sense? What do you mean?
Well, you've got the salary range midpoint, $105,640, but the salary range maximum, $79,000. Town Accountant, Town Treasurer, Facilities Director?
You're looking at handout number 11?
Yeah.
Yeah. Remember I said that there are eight steps in the classification compensation plan? In Article II, all you're going to see are steps one through eight. I'm only showing you on this particular chart, a maximum number, which really is designed to give employees room to grow above step eight.
Why is the maximum number lower than the midpoint number?
Why is the maximum, I'm sorry, I don't quite find-
Town Accountant, Town Treasurer, Facilities Director?
Yeah.
Is that something that I'm missing?
Current range for, let's say, the Town Accountant is $65,000 to $79,000?
Yeah, but the midpoint is $105,000.
Oh.
That's a typo.
That's a typo.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Because I looked at those, I'm like, wait a minute, I don't really understand.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, that's definitely a typo, because it's the same number for the, those three positions. Now, that's definitely a typo.
Okay, so your Town Accountant, Town Treasurer, Facilities Director, those are just typos?
The midpoint number.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, that's fine, thanks. Run, run through this process with me going forward, because, you know, to me, and I understand you're trying to reclassify, and that's fair, but to me, I think it's important that we have a process in place that's going to be manageable, understandable,
Right.
and, and I want to say, easy every year. So, i- is there not a cost of living increase that would be applied in the next fiscal year?
Not automatically. There is, what I'm suggesting from a process standpoint is that positions are classified based on, as I mentioned earlier, what you require someone to do and what you establish as the minimum qualifications, not necessarily the market data, okay? That's the first step.
I understand that, I understand.
Once you've done that, then what I'm suggesting is you would collect market data on a position-by-position basis, and then focus specifically on the survey average midpoint of the data, ruling out the lows and the highs of the data, because as you just mentioned earlier, the data isn't as, quite as reliable as ideally you would like it to be. And we're using midpoint data on a grade level by grade level basis. And so, if you look at that same chart you were pointing out, you know, if you look at chart number 11.
Yeah.
And so, let me just walk you through, just as an example, to give you a better understanding of it. The, if you go over to the right-hand side of that chart where it shows you the fiscal-
Which level are you on?
Let's look at level two, for example, because we didn't collect any market data
Okay.
for Community Development Director or Assistant Town Council.
Okay.
So, if you look at grade level two for salaried positions,
Yeah.
and specifically the Town Accountant and the Town Treasurer positions.
Yeah.
If you take the fiscal '16 survey average midpoint column,
Yeah.
and if you were to add those two numbers together, the $74,027 plus the $76,078,
Yeah.
those are real market numbers. If you want to know where we got those numbers from, you just have to look at the following salary survey data charts, okay? So, the average midpoint for the, those two positions, if you add those two numbers together and divide by two, if you go back over to the middle of the chart, you see where it says "proposed range benchmark" as a, as a header, right in the middle of the chart.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And you see the number $75,052.
Okay, that's at the top of your grade level.
That's right, under, under the column Benchmark.
Yeah.
That $75,052 is calculated based on the average midpoint of the survey data we collected for those two positions.
Okay.
If you go to grade level three, now you see we have a lot more salary data to work with.
I see that.
Do the same average midpoint, if you were to add that column together, the average midpoint, and divide it by the number of positions that we had survey data for, you would get the proposed benchmark of $77,447. That's why you see an odd number. Now, the benchmark number, as I described to you, is a market number. We're not making that number up. That's coming right from market data, based on the group of positions. We then use that as a guide to develop a minimum and step eight as a maximum to the benchmark.
Okay.
And so, by doing it that way, as you- And so by doing it that way, as you, in order to maintain the ranges going forward, you would collect new salary data from one fiscal year to the next, which would have the net effect of changing your benchmark number, which in turn will change your minimum and your step eight number for each of your respective salary ranges. So that what adjusts the ranges going forward is your market data, not a cost of living number. The cost of living aspect of things only comes into play once you're talking about how to pay an employee. And what we're saying is employees will be paid within the first eight steps, depending upon what their salary is, and we'll be showing the Finance Committee and employees a much more detailed chart showing you exactly where employees fall within each of these ranges and the respective eight steps that will be recommended for each grade level. And so as an employee goes up through the steps, and you'll see that the steps, for example, are equal dollar amounts between the steps, not percentages.
Let me just stop you right here, because it sounds very complicated in terms of managing this going forward. Are you telling me that each year going forward, the step numbers could change based upon the proposed range benchmark?
No. What could change, depending upon how the market adjusts, is whether or not, based on new market data, whether or not steps one or step eight are still competitive with that data. So the personal board would look at new market data, look at a new benchmark-
Yeah, and they could-
And determine-
They could change steps one to eight, every year it could change.
It's possible if the market data changes, but that's, you know, subject, subjected to, or, you know, based on what the personal board feels would be a competitive range. So that you don't have to necessarily change the range automatically. If you decide to change it, it'll be based on whether or not the ranges are still competitive with market data at that point in time.
And that's going to entail surveying these 11 or 13 communities and averaging it and coming up with that benchmark data?
Yes, you will, but you won't have to survey all the positions in the plan. You would only survey enough positions to get a sense of what the marketplace is doing. What I would describe to you as a benchmark survey, similar to what we did for the hourly position, we didn't survey every single hourly position, we didn't really need to. We wanted to make sure that we surveyed enough positions consistent with the levels of responsibility or the grade level structure. So next year, for example, instead of surveying 20-some-odd salaried positions, you really would only have to survey enough of a represent, representation of the group, meaning levels of responsibility, to get a sense of what the marketplace is doing out there, and then compare that new market data, specifically the average midpoint, and see whether or not your current minimum and, first step and eighth step are still competitive.
But if you're not going to look at all of the data, isn't that an arbitrary figure based upon the communities that you select?
You're looking at enough data for each group of positions. You don't have to look at every single position. Because what's really driving the compensation process is not the market data. What's driving the compensation process to pay a position is how you classify the position, based on what you require an employee to do. We're only using market data basically to define the word competitive, and that's really all we're doing.
But if we know that the eight steps could potentially change every fiscal year-
It's possible.
How are we going to have certainty in terms of budgeting going forward by looking at what each individual employee is getting?
Well, the personal board would make a decision as to, based on new market data, whether or not the ranges for each of the grade levels, again, whether it's hourly or salaried, and whether a particular range should or shouldn't be adjusted. So you don't necessarily have to adjust every single range, you'll make that subjective decision based on what the market data tells you. And depending upon where employees are within the range structure, whether they're at step eight or step two or three, I think would be a factor for the personal board to consider in deciding whether or not the ranges or the steps, the corresponding steps, in fact, do need to be changed. At least if you do make a change, you're always making a change in comparison to market data. You're not making a change based on cost of living, okay? So the whole purpose, the objective, as I stated to begin with, is to maintain these ranges competitive with the market data. And so by looking at new market data from one fiscal year to the next, that'll tell you how much, if any, and you always have that flexibility to decide whether you want to change or not. There is, how competitive you want to be with the marketplace is really up to the town of Milford, literally on a position-by-position basis. In some positions, you may decide to be more competitive with than others. It really depends on what the data shows you. And again, it's important to keep in mind the distinction between paying a position, which is really all the ranges showing you. We're not showing you anything about employees on this chart, all right? This is strictly the position.
All right, I understand that.
So you don't have to change these ranges from, they shouldn't be automatically changed from one year to the next. Hopefully, they're wide enough, in fact, when you look at that chart, what these percentages are showing you on the far right-hand side is the proposed range compared to that market data. And you'll notice, when you look at the chart, if you sum up all the maximums for all five grade levels, you'll see the percentages at the bottom are wide enough so that we know that today, for fiscal '17 anyway, this data is competitive. And so depending upon what new data you collect for '17, you'll decide whether you want to make a change for fiscal '18.
So this here, when you talk about the cost variance, for example-
Yeah.
Well, let's go to the next fiscal year. So that $3,800, are you saying that if this proposal gets adopted, it's only an additional $3,800?
In comparison to the 2%.
Okay, right, and-
Without changing the steps, Brian?
Yeah.
We would not be resurveying and amending-
Okay. Because that seems unmanageable on a year-to-year basis.
Warren and I have talked about this, and we expected that every three years, we'd introduce, or at least look in total to see what the other towns and communities are-
Unless we find that, like when we advertise certain positions, if we're way out of whack with what's out there, then we may have to look at adjusting those sooner than a three-year bump.
Okay. But again, because I mean, this process, I think it's important for your committee to have something that's manageable and feasible and practical to do, and I wasn't getting that sense, but, okay, all right.
Well, again, I would encourage you to go back and look at one of the handouts that describes the salary adjustment process and the five steps that are outlined in that handout. When you read through those five steps, it should be clear to you, and as well as anyone else frankly, as to what the process is that we're recommending be established in order to maintain your salary ranges. And it all starts with collecting new market data, and then describes in the four following steps how we're recommending using that market data to decide whether or whether or not, whether you should or shouldn't adjust those ranges. The point being, it's just not automatic.
Okay.
Okay?
There is one other point where cost of living does come into play. If the person has reached the final step, step eight-
Okay.
-in the next year, instead of freezing that person's pay rate, we're suggesting that we utilize a cost of living increase-
Okay.
-for those employees.
Right, okay.
So the point being that people don't automatically max out the way they do today. You know, within, in this case, within five years or four years, depending upon what step you start at, you then max out, you reach the top step, and other than whatever the, has been the cross-the-board adjustment, at least now, if there is going to be an adjustment, the higher up in the range you grow, the personal board will be able to describe whether you're being paid competitively. And the point being, you don't have to reach the eighth step in order to be paid competitively.
Right.
In fact, far from it. When you basically reach about the fourth or fifth step in any of the salary ranges, compared to the market data, you're being paid competitively, but you still have room to grow.
And the steps are based on years of service?
Yes.
Okay.
One year of service for each step.
Okay, all right. I think I'm all set.
Okay. Will?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, and I just want to comment that I'm very happy, Dennis, that you made that point, because that's where, attending a lot of these meetings with these folks, the ranges are wide enough that there's, there's growth, quite ample actually, as far as I'm concerned, within each one of those, in each one of those positions. So the fact that, you know, that's why I kind of got taken aback a little bit when, when you were talking about doing this every year. Yes, you could, but I, I agree with Brian, you certainly wouldn't want to take that on every year, and I don't think you have to, because the ranges have so much room for them. And you have, like, our teachers, you're building in steps tied to their, to their year-to-year employment. So, you know, if you start at step three, great, you have five years before you're maxed out, but there's a good amount of growth within that.
You don't max out, though. There is, what the board, the structure to pay an employee is that, yes, there is an annual increase as reflected by those eight steps. Today, you have five steps. The number of steps is somewhat incidental, but the point being, on a yearly basis, the annual basis, an employee would go from one step to the next until they reach step eight. But the reason why, and it was a little bit confusing to you, the reason why you see a maximum column there, is that that's really showing you that there is room to grow above that eighth step. The criteria the personal board establishes to enable an employee to grow above the eighth step, Dennis alluded to one of them being cost of living. There's no reason why the board can't consider other criteria, such as years of service and/or possibly merit. Those remain to be determined. But the point being, what we were trying to eliminate is people automatically, within a defined number of years, maxing out. That doesn't happen under this plan. And as you pointed out-
Yeah.
-the range is wide enough, so you really shouldn't have to adjust those ranges that frequently. You know, all depends on what the marketplace does.
And would you recommend, and Charlie touched on it, when a certain position becomes vacant, and you look at the market data for that specific position, or do you do a sampling because you don't want to just look at one position?
Well-
Does it matter?
Again, in my opinion, what's really most important is to give you the flexibility to decide what's best for the town of Milford. So it isn't automatic to do it anyway. In other words, you decide what's going to work best for you. So for example, using your, you know-
No, but departments have to look at this and figure, you know-
Right, so what I've recommended the personnel board is that within these ranges, and they're, again, they're wide enough so that you can define what I describe as a hiring range or a hiring pay band, and then also what I call a market equity pay band. So that when you look at the structure, when you go to fill a vacancy based on minimum qualifications, if the minimum, maximum, minimum and the eighth step are competitive with the market data, you should be able to hire a qualified applicant somewhere within, let's call it the first quadrant, between steps one and three, let's say, you know, within a range, recognizing that that employee, if they have exceptional qualifications above the minimum that are described in the job description, then you might have to pay them more competitively, and now you'll know how to do that. You'll have a benchmark number that's market-driven to guide you, to tell you if you're going to pay above or below that benchmark number, that binding in itself will tell you how competitively you're paying. And we've lacked that guide in the past to really enable you to determine what you think is a fair level of compensation for the employee.
And you and I had this very specific conversation already. I just think it's important for, you know, to at least explain that as well as you can. So I appreciate you doing that. I'm all, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so next steps. Why don't we talk about what your next steps are and what your plans are before this goes to town meeting?
The next step will be the April 27 meeting with the Finance Committee, which will go over a similar presentation, and Don will be there also. And another point, I mentioned it to Rick earlier this evening, we need to figure out a time, and the last time we met with the employees, we established a day and we set aside a morning and an afternoon session where if employees wanted to attend, you wouldn't wipe out a whole department where everybody's showing up at the same time.
Thank you.
They could split, and some could come in the morning, some could come in the afternoon, and that's when we'll share the more detailed information with the employees.
Okay, and one of the things I wanted to ask is job descriptions, you refreshed all job, how many job descriptions did you touch, adjust, modify?
They've all, at one point, during the past two years, they've all been adjusted.
126?
Whatever that total is.
I'm using your numbers.
No, we didn't change hourly positions. Yeah, we didn't change lifeguard descriptions and things like that.
Lifeguards do lifeguard work.
Yeah, that's still lifeguard.
Every year, yeah.
As I said before, the format should be the same, no matter what kind of position. But basically, all of the positions-
60, a little over 60.
Okay, so, let me, I just want to understand this. So 60 job descriptions were updated, refreshed, and so we know over time, whether it's town of Milford, another town, private sector, wherever, that over a period of time, the job descriptions can lag what the person's actually doing.
Right.
And so-
A lot of differences were computers. The old job descriptions, they didn't use computers.
You need to be very careful, because I think it's an important point to make sure you understand. The job dues can lag, you know, an employee can do something different every single day of the week.
Sure, sure.
But what shouldn't lag are the minimum qualifications that the employee needs to have in order to carry out any job duty, no matter when it is.
No, but I would suspect that the things that drove the changes to the job descriptions are old terminology, old language, and skill sets-
That's correct.
-that were not appropriate for 2016.
Right, in terms of knowledge, skill, and ability.
Each, each employee had an opportunity to comment on the job description that was prepared.
We had quite a few appeals as well.
And we had a number of appeals that decided, they felt that they were doing something differently than was reflected by the job description.
Right, so from a communication standpoint-
He's reading it, that's a good thing, right?
Right, so from a communication standpoint, as Selectman Murray, I think, indicated earlier, when the employee gets back their job description, they'll know that job should have been written, consistent with now how the position's been recommended to be classified.
Sure.
And that's really basically what internal equity is meant to reflect. Then going forward, whenever the employee and/or whomever feels that there's been a significant change, whether it's level of responsibility or job duties or what have you, then there's a process now in place, which has been in place for quite a while, actually, enabling the Personnel Board to make adjustments in class, the classification of a position, which they've done a very, very good job of doing-
We've done those a long while.
-which is really maintaining internal equity, not based on market data, but based on what employees are actually doing. And that's critically important.
So let me ask a question.
Sure.
And I think it was answered, but I just, Brian alluded to it. At a practical level, where does the Personnel Board think they're going to be doing benchmarking? At what, at what frequency do they think at a practical level they're going to be doing?
Every three years.
You think about every three? That's what I thought I heard you say, I just wanted to understand that, because-
I think that on an annual basis, we may do two or three.
Sure, sure.
But to cover all of the salaried positions every three years.
All right. Hey, I look forward to, first of all, I want to thank you for all your work. I know this is two years in the making, a lot of, we talked about a lot of job classifications, not job classifications, job descriptions that were written and updated, make sure they accurately describe the work that people are doing.
There was a lot of reorganizations as well within the town.
There were. As you said, you highlighted some of those in terms of, some that were formerly elected, now appointed, some that, you know, director positions that didn't exist prior. So I think it was important, and I appreciate the fact that you worked on the what portion, that is, what people are doing. Because if you don't do that, if you don't completely understand that, then anything, anything in terms of benchmarking and salary is really flawed from the get-go. So, so I appreciate that, I appreciate the communities that you added here. Having been at the prior presentation, I get it. I see that as a liaison, hopefully that dialogue back and forth was helpful to you-
It was very helpful, yes.
And gave you direction to go forward. So I look forward to seeing what the, what the FinCom has for feedback, and what I think I'm going to do is reach out one-on-one to talk with Zach to see what, what his thought process was and working with you.
As I said, he's been part of this process all along-
Appreciate that.
-since he was formed.
Okay.
Since he was created.
Since he was created, since he was born.
Yeah, well, I'll not go back that far.
All right. But I appreciate it, and thank you for pulling in all the people I know, bringing in the stakeholders and letting them provide feedback, it's a time-consuming work, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
No, thanks. Good luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll let these folks wrap up. The next item on the agenda is Town Administrator, Finance Director, Budget.
So is Rick going to let you know when?
Yes.
Need Dennis?
No, we don't. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Evening.
Congratulations.
One more time, Dennis, I think.
Thank you, Zach.
I think it needs two pushes. One more time. There you go. Thank you.
Very good job, Dennis, very good job.
Thank you, Dennis.
Only had more hype.
Can't help it.
All right, so for the benefit of the community, Town Administrator and Finance Director have pulled together finance requests from various departments, requests for additions of personnel, in addition to changes in budget. And I'll turn it over to you and Rick, and not sure who's going to start, but we'll let you guys decide.
Just very briefly, you'll see six requests listed in a memo that Zach prepared in great detail. The goal was to ask each department head to provide a basis for the request, and then for Zach to analyze how it would fit into the fiscal year '17 budget, and compare if we did or we didn't adhere to these requests. And in some cases, Zach and I went through two or three of the budgets and made adjustments on the expense side, looking at trends over a number of years where really these were easy expense-side budget reductions to make, to help make this a little more palatable. So with that, I'll let Zach take it at this point.
Welcome, Zach. Good to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Still walking through it a little bit, so over the years, some of these requests have been recurring over a number of years, and we didn't feel we're in the proper position to really analyze them or bring them forward. Things have changed a little bit since then, and now some of the requests that we haven't brought forward, realizing that they're somewhat of a necessity, so that's why we're here today. At the same time, I wanted to give a quick update as well as where the budget stands now. A little over a month ago, I believe, I was in front of this board and giving an update on what I was projecting to happen. Since then, we have actually gone through the budget process of giving a directive, getting it out there, and having various departments, all the departments for that matter, submit their budgets to us. And now we have a submitted analysis compared to what I had as a projected. And believe it or not, it's very favorable from what I first submitted. And that doesn't happen very often, but I'm very pleased with that. So it came in significantly less, around $700,000 less than projected. And I feel I need to justify why. The biggest component of that was health insurance. So at the last time we met, we discussed that it was my belief that I thought we were just looking at trend analysis. The turnbacks in health insurance have been rather significant and higher than they needed to be, despite the fact that that is one of those budgets that can fluctuate drastically, depending on anything, what kind of hires we have, depending on someone's being married, having children, switching plans. So it's not as cut and dry as a lot of other budgets may be. So we obviously kept that in the back of our minds when we were making these cuts, and make sure we didn't want to go the other way and cut too much. But we felt comfortable with what we did with the health insurance, and we dropped that around a half million dollars. So that makes up the majority of what this decreased submitted budget is. We're going to talk about some of the things tonight, and it's going to go to FinCom starting Wednesday and Thursday. So we'll talk about the impact of the budgets at that point, and then we'll move them forward to town meeting. Before I go into the positions, I'll just give you a quick summary. So the operating budget as projected, which keep in mind, this does not have any cost for public transportation, as I felt I should leave that out, as it will be presented as a separate article. So we had projected submitted, projected overall operating budget of $96,692. Submitted today, $95,979, a difference of around $700,000. Also, you may notice from the last time we presented, I presented the budget, those bottom right-hand goals and objectives you hear me talk about all the time, they changed a little bit. But for discussion for today, those are really things that we'll work on and shake out for the special town meeting in October. Again, very favorable, they look great. And then you still see a surplus on the bottom. So despite Woodland coming on board, we're all anxious about that. At the next Selectman meeting, I'll be in front of yous to actually have picked the selection and bonding $28 million. So we just had our interview with Moody's, which is the agency that rates us, and that went very smooth. Bond Council is comfortable, I'm very comfortable with the process. And I think it's great, it's coming together excellent. So we've done some very good planning, and we're realizing that we can handle this the way we thought we could, if not even better. So that's some positive feedback on that, and it's coming. Next meeting, like I said, we'll be here, we'll be pulling the trigger.
Okay. Why don't we go over what you have in terms of requests for personnel and what you've reviewed?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just go one by one? How would you like me to do them?
Well, let me do it this way. I think before the members of the board, they're looking at various requests, and I'll go through them quickly. Sue Clark provided information. Rick Vilani provided information relative to Facilities Director, Sue Clark for Administrative Assistant. Sidney DeJesus, Assistant Director. I think town funding that is something we've talked about, rather than revolving fund.
Correct.
I don't know that anybody's not on board, but I think we talked about that last year, and I think there was a general consensus to do that, so it's good that you're bringing that forward.
Correct.
We have Chief O'Laughlin, off-duty police clerk, part-time to full-time. Zach, you talked about backfilling your position as Town Accountant, and Personnel Clerk, which really is a net of decrease in hours.
Correct.
So short of just talking about the process that you created, where folks provided the rationale, explained what they were struggling with within their department, why a change in hours or increase in personnel were necessary. Do you want to talk about that process for a second, what you and Rick went through?
I think maybe we can go back and forth on it. We kind of did it as a team with, again, this, some of these have been a couple of years in the making, you know?
I know some of these have actually been requests, oh, probably even longer.
Probably before my time, too.
Yeah, prior to you, right? Okay, all right, good.
Yeah, so obviously, in wearing my finance hat, I was going to keep an eye on the budgets, make sure that some of these things, despite may be desirable to do so, we want to make sure we're able to while keeping our eyes on our goals and objectives. So what we would do is have an individual come forth and make a request typically at the Town Administrator level with Rick Vilani, and then we would set up a meeting to sit down and talk about it. Before, we would jump the gun of looking at budgets and seeing if it would fit. Would obviously want to determine what need would be there. So we would discuss like the rationale. So some of the memos you're seeing are broken out in that manner. So first, we would go over why is this necessary? What is lacking now? How will this improve your department? What other areas would improve if we were able to do this? What type of funding would be necessary? What type of funding may free up by doing this, which could happen, and you'll see that in one instance here.
Rick, do you want to add anything to this?
The only other thing that I was interested in, if we didn't do it...
Yes.
Repercussions, if any, what, how would your budget be impacted, or your personnel, or your level of service be impacted? And that was a question I had, which we asked them to answer.
Yeah, we're in the service business, right? So most often, this is going to net out if that position isn't brought on as a level of service that's not going to be provided. Let me ask this. Are there any requests that are not here?
No, no, I don't think so.
So every request was furthered on and made...
Oh, let me correct myself. There have been some...
Well, that's what I want to understand.
Yes, yes.
I want to look, I want to see what's not here as well. Talk about, a little bit about what's not here in the screen that decided to defer, delay it, look at it again next year, which are decisions that are made all the time in budgeting and structuring a budget.
One example that comes to mind would be an assistant to the Town Engineer. So that was something that had come up in the past. And...
What else, what else was there?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, do you have any?
Yeah, the only other one, I believe the Senior Center, Sue was looking to augment another position. But we've talked, you know, Zach and I talked with Sue, this she felt would be a good start. And it's not that we've taken that off the table, but for now, you know, we've discussed that with her. So that would be another example.
Actually, I'll give you another one, too. So the Milford Youth Center came forward, and when we were discussing about moving this position in, they also were inquiring about moving their part-timers or program coordinators, summer camp people, stuff like that, which were fairly significant. But we determined that by moving the assistant in, it should be sufficient enough to free up enough money in the revolving fund to handle operations to do so. So...
All right, no, that's helpful.
Every so often, we hear them, and we hear it out and try to rationalize it and see if it's worth bringing forward to the board.
Okay, you've, I want to not talk for a moment, but, so what we have are, we have a budget in front of us. We have recommended modifications to positions, and they're not all ads, so be mindful of that. And you provided a great deal of backup data. In addition to that, let me do this. Let me go to my colleagues and see where they are on this packet, see if they're comfortable, and see if you could provide additional information if requested.
Sure.
Brian?
Well, first of all, the budget information that you presented is very favorable. Submitted budgets are coming in $700,000 less than originally projected. That's good news.
Yes.
But, you know, it's certainly not an indication to have a feeding frenzy.
It is not.
And I think what you have here is a targeted approach at some key departments. Several of these, if not all of these, we have already seen, discussed, and held back at varying degrees from different board members to see the big picture, the entire picture. This is, in fact, now the big picture. So being down the Senior Center, there's no question that there's a need that Sue has for a full-time administrative assistant. She relies very heavily on volunteers. They do an excellent job, but we need to start staffing that 16, 17,000-square-foot building that is constantly busy adequately. The Facilities Director, there's no question that the facilities person is handling all of the buildings, much more than in just a custodial manner. And it's also a semi-supervisory situation, particularly now where we have additional custodians at, again, newer buildings. With the Youth Center opening up, that's 30,000 square feet with a junior custodian in that building, with some huge mechanical needs, other operational needs. There's no question we're going to be needing something a bit more than just a custodian. The Assistant Director to the Youth Center, again, something that's been discussed for a number of years. They were operating on a very thin line by using their revolving budget. The usage, no doubt in my mind, is going to increase exponentially with this new building. They're going to need every penny they can from their revolving fund to provide programs. And by taking that position out of the revolving into the town budget where it really belongs, that's going to free up money to allow them to increase their programs. The Police Chief, I think, makes a nice case to increase the off-duty police clerk from part-time to full-time in his memorandum. It makes a lot of sense. The promotion of the Assistant Town Accountant is just a natural evolution of this finance department that is being put together piece by piece by you and Rick, and I think it's coming along very nicely. And, well, lastly, who's to argue with the elimination of a clerk that you don't feel is necessary? So, I mean, I think both of you have done an excellent job. The word comprehensive is used far too much, but in this instance, it certainly applies. And I think all of these requests have tremendous merit, and you've pointed out how they fit in with the operational budget. They fit in wisely and correctly, and, you know, I'm in full support of all of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, first of all, thank you, Rick and Zach, for this. This is a great document, I actually read it quite a few times, very impressive. And I was one of the board members that certainly held up a position or two, especially the Facilities Director, because I did want to see all the requests at once, and I very much appreciate that, and I appreciate the time it took. I've supported the Assistant Director since being on the FinCom, I think it just makes sense. Not only is the individual a proven asset, but the position should be a town employee at this point. Obviously, she is, but paid through the town. My only problem is that, and I hope we can remedy that tonight, because it's just a matter of equity and fairness, is I would like the Facilities Director paid retroactively from the day he was reclassified. This board held that up, and I'm one of the specific members that did, because I wanted to see the whole picture, but that doesn't mean that someone doesn't deserve to be compensated once they're reclassified. So I'll either, when it comes time, either put that into the motion or hear from my colleagues, but I think that's just a matter of fairness. And we've obviously done that with other contracted employees, as well as everybody else. So I think it's just what's fair for one is fair for all. But no, I'm very supportive of all this, and if you guys are saying this is the time to do it, and you certainly proved it in this document, then I think it's the right time to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Will, and that's a great point. Yeah, this does bundle into one place, all of the requests. It also lets us, rather than make point decisions somewhere through the process in that year, allow us to make them relative to the entire budget, right? So we know where the trade-offs are, we know what our status is on the budget now. And, you know, I just want to thank the department heads, including yourself, for pulling this together, because I know there's a great deal that goes into this to make sure we're not haphazard in our process, and this is not. You know, the only caution I have for people when we look at budgets like this, this is a great packet. It tells us exactly why something's needed. If somebody wants to take exception, look at it, get the details, go down and visit a particular department, see it, they can do that. I'm immediately struck by the amount of pressure on the Senior Center, and it's, you know, I don't want to call it oversubscription, I don't know what to call it. I want to leave it in a positive, right? It's being used by an awful lot of people. And that pressure requires us to, and Sue, to be very creative in the way she addresses the needs of the seniors going forward. My only caution and reminder to people, this is this year. We're going to be looking at more positions as the population of this community and this country and this, you know, demographic increases, and there are more and more seniors. And I just see greater and greater good things happening, and with that comes more subscription of people that want to go there and participate. It's doing a lot of great things for people. I expect the same from the Milford Youth Center. I expect, as Brian pointed out, only increases in that demand. Facilities Director, you know, there was a period some 20 years ago where officials within the community were challenged to say, hey, maybe we're not spending as much as time and effort as we need to on our facilities. I don't think that can be said today. I think people understand the more deferred maintenance that you do, the more likely it's going to be just a greater challenge as you let leaks continue, or whatever it is. So I'm comfortable with the packet that you prevented, I'm supportive of it. I don't know that you need a vote, I think we ought to have a vote to move forward these positions and this packet.
We're going to need a vote at least to reclassify the custodial to the Facilities Director, because that was never done. It was presented to us in December, not acted upon by this board, and the memorandum request that the position be voted on.
Yeah, and I think we took that, we took that under advisement, and I'm prepared to go forward, I'm prepared to entertain motions. So my suggestion, if it's, if my colleagues are in agreement, is we do it as a bundle to accept the recommendations that have come forward from Town Administrator and the Finance Director. And the caveat is, and I want to go back to that, the rerank, accept the position of Facilities Director. And I'll let you structure, keep consistent with your thought process, I'll let you structure if you'd like the motion. If you'd like to bundle it.
Well, I think, yeah, no, I'll definitely make a motion that we take the recommendation of the Town Administrator and the Finance Director for the six positions that are presented as we accept, with the accepting of the Facilities Director, paid retroactively to the day he was reclassified.
Which is December. Time frame, December.
I can get that.
I'll get that, yeah.
Are you okay with that motion?
I don't know that he ever was reclassified. I mean, the request came to us on December 22nd, 2015.
The Personnel Board had...
He was reranked by the Personnel Board.
Okay. It was done at that point?
I have a memo from them that's saying effective immediately. So I have that exact date.
Because, okay, because the request came to us to create the position of a Facilities Director, and we did not act on that.
Yeah, there was...
I mean, in terms of a legal sense, I mean, I don't want to get us into a bind here where we're voting something back that we did not act on in December. It's not a tremendous timeframe. It's not a tremendous timeframe, but.
Maybe a motion then to adopt the position of facilities director, and then a second motion to adopt all of the six recommendations, including.
I think you have to do that, because we haven't adopted.
Two separate motions.
Yeah, that makes that, no, that makes it cleaner.
Why don't you clarify that?
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept the position as facilities director.
Is there a second?
Second would only amend that the position be filled with the present individual. Because we're going to create the position, but now we're going to say who's going to be handling it, so be the present incumbent.
Okay. You okay with that modification? Okay. As a second, I'll make that unanimous. Then the next motion for the other five positions?
I'll do it again. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the town administrator and the finance director for the six positions presented to us. And the analysis of personnel changes dated March 31st, 2016.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor of that. That makes that unanimous.
And then maybe if we're going to retroactive the facilities director.
Just going to do a third one, yes, so it's clean. No, no, that's okay. I just figured that's probably the smartest thing to do at this point. I'd like to make a motion to retroactively pay the facilities director from when the personnel board reranked him.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor of that unanimous. Very good. Zach, is there anything that we didn't cover that you want to cover and specifically talk about?
No, I just wanted to make it clear. I failed to touch upon the fact that I also incorporated benefits into this analysis as well, and that played into how we decreased the health insurance. Obviously, we kept that in mind when we developed the health insurance figures. So here all the time, it's not just the salaries. You want to make sure you incorporate the benefit aspect, which can be significant. And some of these that were our existing positions, there's no benefit impact.
Right, right.
It's already benefit-eligible. Others, part-time to full-time, there is an impact there. But that's, as you could see, that's all been incorporated into it.
So as there are changes in benefits, how do you have it worked out with Kelly or the forms such that something that might have a significant impact, three forms, three additions, you know, changes in status, whatever it is that's a flag for you? How has that worked out in terms of mechanics? You get flagged, the finance department gets flagged.
Explain one more time. I kind of lost it.
Is there a substantial change in benefits if somebody sees?
Oh, I see.
A change of five people within a four-day period for these types of benefits?
Yeah, so we obviously keep a decent fluff in there in the event that something does happen.
Sure, sure.
The problem was that fluff got way too large.
Yeah, it did.
It clearly wasn't ever going to be.
It's a technical financial term, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's not fluff or nutter.
So we still feel very comfortable that if there are going to be significant changes that the budget can't handle it.
Okay. All right. Rick, do you have anything further?
No, I'm good. Zach did a great job.
Okay, good. Outstanding. Thank you very much, Zach. I know you have a long travel, so I appreciate you coming, staying late with us.
Thank you so much. It makes some people very happy, so.
Will, please, Zach.
Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good work.
Appreciate it.
Nice work. Next, we have town administrators' report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been notified by Mass DOT that the Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid Funding for fiscal year '17 will total $200 million statewide. The fiscal year Chapter 90 apportionment for our town is $823,856. And it's a slight increase, about $2,600 over last year. I want to report on our electricity accounts. I, along with our energy consultants from USOUS, received bids for a new electricity contract as ours expires in November of this year. Pleased to report that we were able to receive a bid, which should result in a savings over the next four years for the town of in excess of $627,000. Sad to report that our local inspector, Tim McCarty, has issued a letter that he will be resigning as the town's local inspector. Tim accepted an offer to work for the town of Bellingham, I believe, in a full-time position. He's been a valuable employee, I believe, since 2012. He will be missed, and Tim's last day is this week, April 18th, actually, next Monday. I have an update on the hazard mitigation plan. I'm pleased to report that the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has approved an award of $32,985 to be used to update our multi-hazard mitigation plan. We will reimburse up to 75% of approved, allowable and eligible costs up to the award amount. I want to thank town engineer Vani Reese and highway surveyor Scott Christofouli for the reference in applying for and securing this important grant. And finally, I think, as the board already knows, town engineer Vani Reese has accepted a position with the town of Framingham. She has informed me her last day will be April 29th, 2016. I believe she's accepted a position that's going to allow her to grow as an engineer in the municipal side. I think it goes without saying that Vani has been a tremendous asset to the town, and she's going to be extremely difficult to replace. I know I have worked with her, and she has successfully worked on many important projects for the town, including Milford Pond, Stormwater Management, Milford Youth Center, and just numerous other capital projects. During her three years here, I have found her work ethic and professionalism to have been exemplary. And again, I think she will be sorely missed, and I wish her well. And I say no, the board does. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. I have to agree with you. I want to comment that we're losing two good employees. It's going to happen time to time. It's never a good feeling, but, you know, at the same time, you obviously want to wish those employees well in their future endeavor. We take resignations with regret and, you know, support them. The way you had explained some of the positions that, you know, we always want to know what it is that people are going to do and how that position differs when they leave here. And certainly with Tim and Vani, it seems like, you know, progress in their career and opportunity for them that you'd never, you know, wish anything other than growth and continued opportunities. So that's good to hear, and I know she's done a great job, and so has Tim. All right. Any other comments, questions? I know the FEMA grant is great news, and we ought to get that notification out to Scott and Vani for their great work in getting that FEMA grant. The Chapter 90 money? You know, just a caution for everybody, a couple of thousand more than last year is not going to cut it. I know we add a little bit from our local contribution, but doing as well as we did last year is not progress. We need to do better, and the only thing that Scott's lacking is money. Okay. Brian?
Yeah, no, let me just reiterate. It's very disappointing to lose someone of the caliber of Vani Reese for the town of Milford. I had the pleasure of working with her perhaps a little bit more closely than others on the youth center, and she was just top-notch in the entire project and is a huge reason for the success of that project. Beyond that, you know, she's really the only employee that we get a monthly status report from, and when you look at that report, you see the breadth of what she is involved in throughout the town. There are so many different, very technical projects, some not even so technical, but certainly work-intensive, and she handled all of it very, very well. So Milford's loss is clearly Framingham's gain, and it's very, very unfortunate that she's leaving the town of Milford. I didn't get a chance to work with Mr. Arcady at the building department, but I've always heard very good things about him. His situation's a little bit different. He's moving on. He's getting a full-time job, a higher position, but that's not necessarily the situation with Vani. I think that was it. The Chapter 90 money, that was the state-issued funds, right? What was that number again, Rick?
Twenty-three thousand.
Eight hundred, $823,856.
Okay, and that's pretty comparable to last year.
We increased about $2,645.
Okay, all right. Well, the highway department, as they always do, will make very good use of the funds and resources that they have, and hopefully, maybe we can support the finance committee to supplement that additionally. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to Rick and you, Mr. Chairman, just for scheduling. Our next meeting, the 25th.
Correct.
My son's having his open-heart surgery on the 20th. That's what we've been gearing up for, for the last couple of months, so I will not be able to make that. He'll still be very much there, so I want to let my colleague know as well as you for scheduling, or just at least that hopefully there's still a quorum. It also happens to my wife's birthday, so we'll be celebrating it in the hospital with Caleb, but it's been a long time coming, so I couldn't reschedule. It's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business, zoning board of appeals vacancy. Why don't we go over, we're given a packet of information basically outlining zoning board of appeals, five-year term, and alternates have three-year terms. We've got applications for appointments here. There's a recent resignation for, I think, health purposes, but, and, which leaves an opening on the zoning board of appeals. Why don't I, I think there was a letter, the email that came across as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so currently, the board is made up of Mary Carlson, David Consigli, John Dagnis. There's a vacancy. Then there's David Pine, Brian Falk, Mark Calzaloya, Charles D. Antonio. What's the pleasure of the board in terms of the vacancy? Brian, I'll go to you.
Well, typically, what the board was done in terms of fairness, when a vacancy occurs on a regular member, the board has promoted the most senior associate to that position, and then that would allow a vacancy at the associate position to be filled. So, I mean, looking at that, it looks as though Brian Falk is associate number one, so he is the associate with the longest tenure. It would seem that he would be most appropriate to fill the vacancy. And then if you're looking to fill the vacant associate position, if you use the criteria that you've used on other appointments, looking at the longest submitted application to be on the board, that would be Mike Visconti. That's what I see.
Yeah, I think in my history, I've seen a variety of methods used to appoint associate members to full-time. I've seen, heard of times where it may not come from the list. But in any event, I'm not opposed to any of the things that you spoke about. Is there a motion there, I guess, is the question? Would you like to make a motion?
Well, I would move to appoint to the vacant position Brian Falk.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Okay, not hearing a second. Is there another motion?
Well.
Make his motion, whatever motion you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mark Calzaloya to the vacant regular member position.
Is there a second for that?
I would second that.
Okay.
With my last, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add that I thought it was a very nice touch that he sent us a letter today, too, so.
So we have a motion. We have a second. I'll make that unanimous. All in favor for, I think the motion was making Mark Calzaloya fill vacancy of regular member?
If I could just discuss, I mean, in terms of a letter, I mean, I'll vote on the motion, but we also did receive a letter from Mr. Falk, too, so I don't know that that should be.
I wasn't separating it from anyone, Brian. I'm just saying that I, we have a lot from a lot of people. I'm just glad you sent something in today.
And we had gotten one on April 8th from Mr. Falk, too, so I don't really know the relevancy of that.
So we have a motion. We have a second. That's a vote, and I'll make that unanimous. Okay. Is there a motion for, is there a motion for replacing the alternate member, Mark Calzaloya, who's now become a permanent member of the ZBA?
Make whatever motion you'd like.
Is there a motion?
Look to Will for the motion.
You don't have, okay.
The motion.
Will, do you have a motion?
Well, I didn't know we were going to be doing the alternate as well today. But looking back 35 years of facility and construction management, I'll make a motion to appoint John Mastriani Jr.
Is there a second? All right.
Let me just be with me one second. Just trying to.
Do you want to see that?
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, you got it?
I'd second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll make that unanimous to make John W. Mastriani Jr., 200 Cedar Street, a member of the ZBA, or I should say, alternate member of the ZBA. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. We don't want to hold up that board. For folks that aren't clear, alternate members serve on a frequent basis when members are either a butters to the application or have personal or financial conflict with the decision. So alternates are used frequently, and alternates serve us very well, and I appreciate their hard work. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Milford Cultural Council vacancies. The board want to take any action relative to these vacancies? How many vacancies are we talking about?
There are more vacancies than.
Than we have applications.
Applicants.
I'm going to ask a question. Is there any reason why we wouldn't accept all of the applications for people who want to serve on a board or committee, especially where we have more vacancies? I asked that of the board members if we can consider taking all of the applications that are available to serve. Brian, any thoughts on that?
I don't have any problem with that, particularly in this instance. The only thing I would add is that there were, I believe, and I haven't had a chance to cross-reference, but there were some applications in the zoning that also indicated that they would be willing to serve on the cultural. So I haven't had a chance to cross-reference all of those, but if we are going to do that, then I would just, I guess, indicate that we accept ones that were in the zoning package as well.
Yeah, I think we're talking about being able to accept all of the applicants for the Milford Cultural Council.
That is correct.
And still not fulfill.
We still won't have the full.
Or exceed the requirement. Okay. All right, so what we're talking about, and just for the benefit of those who might be watching at home, we have an application from Vincent R. Kiz, what's that?
Vinnie Kizo.
Kizo. We have a application from James J. Buckley, no relation. We have an application from Marcia Marcy. It's a business law degree. Let's see, Megan Olivera. We have an application for. We also have an application from Christopher Vendetti. And by the way, great backgrounds on a lot of these folks, and their desire to serve is clear in terms of their application. Christopher D. Wilson, 152 Congress Street. And help me with the pronunciation of the last one, Michael A.
Lalee.
Lalee. Who wants to get involved and has checked off many of the boxes. Zoning Board of Appeals, Multi-Cultural Council is one of them. So with that, we accept all of the applications. There a motion?
I'll move to accept all of those, and I'm looking, Rick, you did include.
We did, for example, the one on top had applied for both, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
I would move to approve all of the aforementioned individuals to the Milford Cultural Council.
Outstanding.
Second it.
Great to have them, and that's unanimous. All right. Town administrators' report on MWRTA proposed fixed bus route update?
Yes, if I could update on a few points. One, the public forum has been confirmed for Tuesday, April 18th, actually, next Monday. One, the public forum has been confirmed for Tuesday, April 26, 6:00 PM, at the Milford Town Library. I have contacted representatives from Metro West, Regional Transit Authority, Ed Carl, Ed and Carl Demaglia, they will be attending also. Also, we have ready-to-go, a letter to town meeting members, it's ready to be mailed, it will include a flyer of the actual event, the turn-by-turn-
Great.
And the budget itself, so that they'll have that information beforehand, and again, that is ready to be mailed tomorrow or the next day. We have sent out a number of department head surveys to department heads, school department, FinCom, community use, library, and a number of other committees. We have received just about all of them back.
Right.
Probably will follow up after our April 26 meeting. So far, everything has been positive. Obviously, highway might be the only one that, that indicate there could be some impacts, for example, plowing, sanding, is he going to have to plow sidewalks? What level of service for handicap accessibility for plowing? Summer maintenance, if there's going to be any. So, Scott will attend the meeting on the 26th, and we'll get more answers to those questions for him, and then he can better assess what impact it may have on his department. Some of the other things that were talked about, from a number of the department heads and/or committee members, that obviously more visitors would go to the library, would go to the senior center, would go to the veterans' office, it might help veterans get to jobs, for example. The schools, number of comments, parents could use maybe to attend after-school events, students could use to get to a, a job after school that they might not be able to get to. So, all of that, I found very positive. Again, Scott is the one that we're going to have to see, because obviously, it's going to involve some work and some additional time and maybe manpower and maybe cost to him. So, what I'd like to do is, in, for relevant departments, after the next forum, is probably send out a little bit of a second-type survey, or at least follow up with them based upon what they heard at the forum. Do they want to supplement, for example, or amend their survey for me? The last thing, I, I'm still speaking with John Fernandez, he is again working on to see what legislation, if any, that obviously that can be key-
Equity issue.
Yeah, here, that you had talked about earlier, Mr. Chairman, so we've been talking about that, and pretty much, that's where we're at. If Harold wants to supplement, he's obviously more than willing, he's been working, I think, every day on this, and I commend him for that. So, that's where we're at, right at this moment.
Well, let me say this, you know, I don't want to focus just on Scotty's response, because from a highway department, you know, he's probably going to be the most anxious about the level of support required, the, you know, right now, he has a, a little more latitude, but if there are bus, bus stops out there, or people expect it to be clear, then certainly he has his reasons. But some of the things that you mentioned, in terms of positive aspects, were maybe, for example, the one that I picked up on, I'm sure there are many, many more from a positive perspective, is maybe there's going to be ability of more parents to get to open houses and parent-teacher conferences and all that.
That was another one I just didn't mention, yes.
Is, and this is exactly why I had asked that we reach out to the department heads, because there are things within our scope of responsibility and our background and our skill sets, we're not even going to think of, that, you know, professionals in that space are going to, and this is what we wanted to hear. I'd encourage you to get that information out as soon as reasonably possible, as soon as the department heads and the boards and committees are comfortable with it, right?
Yes.
Because, as you said, this, some of this may be in draft form and a work in progress, so we don't want to necessarily go out with it until they've had an opportunity to be at a forum, ask some questions, talk with people. Maybe benchmark with their peers who have bus routes within their communities are great ways in which these department heads will come up to speed on the upsides and downsides of anything, and I, you know, I don't see a lot of downside. Certainly, there's a financial impact, but, you know, not everything is measured on a spreadsheet, and the, the cost of life, or the, the quality of life improvements I see is far outweighing any negatives. But, let's see, let's talk to the, the people, and let's see the types of things we're not thinking about that they are. Thank you for pulling that together.
Okay.
Harold, do you have anything?
Well, thank you.
Okay. All right. And thank you for your help again. I don't have anything under old business. Do the members have anything under old business they wanted to bring up?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay. New business, we have, the police chief has requested a stop sign at Glenon Drive and Taft Street. He's recommending the Board of Selectmen authorize the installation of a stop sign at Glenon Drive at the intersection of Taft. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Seconded.
Seconded, that's unanimous. All right, so we've handled that. Next, we have a request from the police chief to dispose of surplus vehicles, specifically, he's asking for authorization to dispose of two surplus vehicles, 2011 Crown Victoria and a 2006 Ford Expedition.
So moved.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. Green Leaf Garden Club, and specifically Margaret Knowlton, has sent us a request, request that she hold a plant sale at Louisa Lake Park on May 21st from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Is there a-
I'll move.
Okay.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. They always do such a great job, it's good to see. Good to start to approve spring events, right? And we have the renewal of second-hand licenses. People like to make a motion, do I hear a motion to support those? We can read them out?
I'll move for the renewal of the second-hand licenses for 2016, Bazza Jewelry and Gifts at 196 East Main Street, Unit 48, Central Street Resale, Two Central Street, Marshals of Milford, Inc., 154 West Street, Mr. Nasciamento Mendez, DBA Mendez Antiques, 117 East Main Street, Nathan's Jewelers, 157 Main Street, TJ Collectibles, Inc., 160 Main Street, This and That Thrift Shop, 260 Main Street.
Seconded.
That's unanimous?
I just need to abstain on Mr. Nasciamento Mendez, TJ Collectibles, Inc., and This and That Thrift Shop.
Okay, so, why don't we break out This and That Thrift Shop, TJ's Collectibles, and Mr. Nasciamento Mendez?
Yes.
And so, we're going to, there was a motion on the, there's a motion to approve Bazza Jewelry and Gifts, Central Street Resale, Marshals of Milford, Milford Nathan Jewelers.
Seconded. Is it, is it, what, what did you say?
What I'm trying to do is leave out.
Yeah.
TJ Collectibles, This and That, and Nasciamento Mendez.
I'll, I'll vote in favor of that.
All right.
That's a motion.
I, I'm going to make it, just to try to, try to clarify this.
Yep.
And that's seconded, and that's unanimous. Will, can you make a motion for-
I move-
Nasciamento Mendez?
Sure, for Mr. Nasciamento Mendez, DBA Mendez Antiques, 117 East Main Street, TJ Collectibles, Inc., 160 Main Street, and This and That Thrift Shop at 260 Main Street.
And I'll second that, and there's one abstention, that's two in favor, one abstention, reflected, Brian abstained. Yeah, I'll take, I'll take care of renewal, or, Will, why don't you take care of renewal of pool table licenses?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve Fun Zone of Milford LLC DBA pins, 110 South Main Street, Hoboken Citizens Club, 252 Central Street, Tai Tran DBA Lucky Nine, 119 East Main Street, for renewal of pool table licenses for 2016.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next is renewal of bowling alley license for Fun Zone of Milford LLC Doing Businesses pins, 110 South Main Street. Is there a motion?
Motion made.
Seconded.
Also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Any new business from the members?
I, I don't have anything, no.
Will?
No, not tonight, thank you.
All right, correspondence. We've got a little bit of correspondence. We've got OUI drink data from the Attorney General. For those who aren't familiar, OUI, OUI drink data is where folks who are charged with OUI voluntarily, whether accurate or not, represent having had their last drink at establishments, and there are two that have popped up, Turtle Tavern and Tradesman Bar. I'll take guidance from the board, but typically, we would send those individual establishments' letters, letting them know that their name had popped up and the dates of the specifics. The board like to do anything differently?
No, no, and just in point of clarification, it's not only individuals who are charged, it's individuals who are found either guilty or plead guilty to it.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Next is police chief's annual license establishment activity report from 1116 to 33116. This is the first report of the year. Note a thinner packet and little activity on some of the establishments. Any, any comments, Brian?
I didn't find anything that was terribly troubling on this. It, it continues a trend, though, of events at, at places like, like McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts, which is, is interesting. None of these, I, I think, are particularly troubling. There was, I think, one situation for, for a hypodermic needle in the men's room, I think the police department, that was at Honeydew.
Yeah, there was another one, too.
Honeydew. And I think that that's, you know, something that I think the police department is working very proactively with the business owners, but in terms of the, the alcohol establishments, which for the longest time seemed to be places of, of disturbance, I, I don't really get that sense. These things that are popping up are pretty, pretty minor, almost misunderstandings, so I didn't really find anything here that I found overly troubling.
Will?
No.
I, I just wanted to make note of a couple of things. When we look at Dunkin' Donuts on 31 Main Street, I appreciate the chiefs working with all licensed establishments, particularly Dunkin' Donuts, which this board has talked about in the past. The only thing I want to reflect on here is that if you look at the first two words of every incident, manager states, employee reports, manager reports, employee reports. These are cases where they're concerned about the well-being of an individual, in some cases, they're looking at people who either appear to be nodding off, they're in their drive-through, and are proactively calling the police, so it's certainly something that in some of the cases, somebody's swaying and standing in front of them, they're worried about them going and getting in a car. It's somebody working proactively. As a matter of fact, McDonald's on Self-Maine Street is interesting. Employee reports that a male seems disoriented in driving his vehicle. Responding officers towed the vehicle and summons a 26-year-old from Bellingham and a 28-year-old from Bellingham for possession of a Class A, specifically heroin. So, in two ca, in, in multiple cases at McDonald's, there are well-being checks where employees are reporting, managers reporting, and so a lot of people doing the right thing, so I don't, I don't want that to reflect negatively on some of, some of those, if you look at the details. So, I appreciate everybody's comments, and appreciate the chief working with those, and I specifically appreciate the licensed establishments not being afraid to call in because knowing it's going to end up on their report. Okay. Does anybody else have any correspondence they'd like to read?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Will?
No, thank you.
A couple of pieces of correspondence, something that came across recently, let's see, police chief is taking back unwanted prescription drugs, drugs. Clean out of those medicine cabinets is April 30th at the Milford Senior Center. You know, the, this is where intervention and control and management, things like opioids begins. It begins in the home, and it begins with people who have unwanted drugs at their house, if they turn those in, that's helpful, and it helps keep them out of the hands of their grandchildren, or their friends, or their children, so appreciate the police chief doing that. Also want to highlight that you can also bring these in at any time, 24 hours a day, every day, in the lobby of the Milford Police Department Headquarters, and no questions asked, it's just a way for your prescription drugs to be given back and disposed of properly so they don't end up in our rivers and streams, because some of those drugs certainly do some, some bad things. The other thing I want to talk about is Milford's Beautification Day, being managed by the Citizens for Milford, is Saturday, April 30th. For those folks that would like to participate, for those high school students that have community participation credit that they're looking for, it's certainly a way to do that. I know the scouts have been involved in the past, they're meeting at 9:00 AM across the street from Sacred Heart Church in the, in the parking lot, and again, that's April 30th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment-
Please.
The, the drug return that you talked about at the police station is, is very easy to do.
Yeah.
The, the box is right there, it's in the lobby, it's, it's something that I had to do a little while ago, so it's, it's very easy to do, and it's, it's a great service. And the beautification day, if people haven't had it, didn't have a chance to do it last year, I would encourage them greatly to do it this year. I participated last year, it was a great time, you know, had, had a lot of good fun with a lot of people, and cleaned up a lot of litter that, you know, accumulates from, from the wintertime in the town.
It does.
So, it's a, it's a great event.
And I'm glad you brought up that, because the, the, the drug take-back at the police station, you don't have to meet anybody, you don't have to bring it in a specific container, you can bring it in a bag, you can bring it in anything, and it goes into a, a container that's mounted on the wall. I've also gotten rid of old prescription drugs that way, so very easy to do, no reason to flush them in the toilet, or wash them down the drain, they can go in there and they're disposed of properly. So, that's the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. We do have, let me pull that back. We do have executive session this evening, for the purposes of collective bargaining regarding both fire and police. So, I'll take a vote to go into executive session.
I'll, I'll move.
Seconded.
All right, that's seconded, I'll take a, I also vote affirmative. I'll take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote affirmative, that's unanimous. For elected, for executive session, we will not be returning to regular session. Thank you and good evening.